So I'm gonna call this meeting of the ordinance subcommittee together. Six P M, Wednesday, May twenty-fifth. We're all present, so we do have minutes to approve. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from three nine, four eighteen to four nineteen.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, beautiful. Now is everybody here from the public to speak on a topic that we don't have on our agenda? Which is, I imagine, most of you, the plastic bag ban.
Probably all of us.
Okay, good. Um, so.
I know, it's like, what a wonderful year.
If you, I mean, we have, we do have a couple, we have signs on our agenda, we have food trucks on our agenda, so.
Well, I'm one of the sign police, I get to like throw signs out if I can't get a hold of somebody that puts a sign where I'm supposed to be.
Yes.
I was nominated a couple of years ago.
Get ready, we're up, going through all the sign ordinance.
Well, maybe we should be involved in that, because it's, you know, the building inspector doesn't want to work on weekends, so he appointed me to do the weekends.
Oh, there you go. Well, our, our ordinance is completely out of compliance because of the Supreme Court decision.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we're fixing that. Uh, but to the, to the task at hand, which is plastic bag discussion, so just so for everybody who is new to this, uh, we don't have an ordinance on the table. Uh, this is our second meeting of fact finding. Uh, we wanna try to get as many people from the community involved to let us know what their feelings are. Um, you know, let us know what they think about pla- plastic bags, uh, pro, con. Um, and try to find a solution for East Hampton that's gonna work for us. Uh, and Councilor Smith brought this forward, so I guess I can turn it over to you and just, um, let you say a few words, and then we'll turn it over, um, for people to give us their input. Uh, I'm gonna, you know, we don't have a huge crowd tonight, so, you know, I don't think we necessarily have to limit the amount of time, but just be aware that, you know, everybody should be able to speak and, um, you know, try to limit it to, you know, five, between five and eight minutes or so, so, yes. Hopefully that'll be an option, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Councilor Smith.
I'm not identifying.
Oh, yeah, I'm Salem Derby, I'm the chair of the ordinance subcommittee.
J P Kuzinski.
I'm Tamara Smith, I'm a city councilor at large, and, um, the reason that I brought forth the consideration of putting any sort of ban or any ordinance on plastic bags, um, there were three main things that happened, kind of all at the same time, and the first, well, we've been a green city in East Hampton since two thousand and ten, and I've known that all along, but it was last year, walking around the city, when I saw a sign designating our city as a green city, and really caused me as a, just as a person who's lived in East Hampton, what the extent of that entails, how did we become a green city, and what does that really, what does that entitle us to, what does that hold us to? And the green city designation really is more about energy consumption. So the majority of the, of the conservation that our city has done thus far has really been in having more efficient ways to supply energy to the city, and really making sure that we're at that end of the energy, you know, utilizing energy and what's the most efficient way to create energy. And that's where you see the L E D lights in our streetlights and the, um, you know, the, the middle school had a lot of applications that allowed them to be more green. But what that really didn't touch upon was the waste that our cities produces and how we are in terms of our waste consumption. So the green city was the first thing that really got me thinking about this as a city councilor. The second thing was that we started to see a trend where, um, when we first started looking into this, um, even within the last couple of months, at that time, there were eighteen cities in the municipality, uh, in the Commonwealth that had passed some sort of ordinance on plastics, and last I had heard, it was up to thirty-two cities. So this is a very timely social issue, there are a lot of cities that are moving on board, and it's kind of nice to be entering the conversation at this point, because we're not the, we're not the guinea pigs of, can this work or not? We have, um, you know, cities that actually abut East Hampton who are already doing similar processes. And the, hi.
Is this the video?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're okay.
That one, I'm sorry. Sorry, you guys.
Geez, right, okay, sorry. Come on, sorry. Um, but the third thing, and this really, this really was profound for me as a parent, is that my children learn a lot about green initiatives in the school curriculum. And so having my kids come home with scholastic news about how we should consider banning plastic bags, having them sing songs in their chorus, talking about the bad lady and her use of bags, and having completely silence for me, where I'm actually, this is part of the job of a city councilor, is how does East Hampton fit into a lot of current events and social issues? So it just seemed like a really prudent thing at this point in time to open up that discussion and see where we, as a community, feel about this. There are a lot of different aspects to this to consider. There are a lot of different options in terms of the products that we could use. There is a different spectrum of how forceful that would be. Some cities tend to do it with a rewards-based system, or, um, having a person pay for those services. Some cities do it through, you'll be fined if you do, you know, if you have bags when there's been an ordinance. And all of those decisions are ones that would impact different people in our community in different ways, and we need to have an opportunity to at least hear people's concerns, hear people's hopes, and then fabricate ordinance from that. So that's really, um, where I was coming from and bringing the issue forth, and I'm really grateful that we're at meeting number two about this and starting to really hear what the general public really is considering, and what you don't wanna see in East Hampton, as well as what you want to see in East Hampton.
So, um, what I can do is just give a little bit of clarity to the process. Um, so we've had one meeting so far. At that meeting, we started to review, um, different ordinances from other communities. Uh, Councilor Smith had a pretty exhaustive, uh, arguments for, arguments against, so we started looking at that. Um, and, you know, really, I think what our job is gonna be is figuring out what's gonna work for East Hampton, um, number one, figuring out something that is enforceable, um, and, you know, trying to take what's out there and create something that is going to fit us, not necessarily taking somebody else and try to fit here. Um, so that's our job, and that's where, that's why we wanted to get this input from people that might have a stake in it, so we can start crafting something that is, uh, more tailored to East Hampton. So that being said, unless Council Kuzinski has something to say, I'd be happy to open it up to the public and hear some input.
I am anxious to hear whatever. You don't have to talk about it, so keep up to here.
Great.
Since I have to sneak out for another meeting across the hall at six thirty.
Real quick, so can you just give us your name?
Okay.
Just for the record.
Okay, Elaine Wood, um, East Hampton resident. I was chair of the recycling committee in Central Mass before I moved here for eight years, and there was no recycling committee when I started it, I actually started it, and tried to get people to recycle, so when I came here, we don't have municipal recycling and trash, so I couldn't even do that, so I feel like bad that I can't like, you know, do what I'm good at. But I talked to Jesse Adams about the bag ban in Northampton, and I said, you should've gone one step further, because I remember thirty years ago, we were trying to ban paper bags. I mean, that's what we were trying to do thirty years ago. And he was a little too young to remember that, but it's like, we're starting to use paper bags again, and I was like, that kinda, we need to go one step further and maybe charge people to use reusable bags, and help people that can't afford to buy the reusable bags, but it's, it's gonna hurt the environment whether, it's, all the paper, I cringe when I see all the paper bags over in Northampton, I'm at the store, I just, I was like, we stopped doing that for a reason, but the paper bags, the same thing as plastic, they don't degrade, so. And I'm hearing about the biodegradable bags, and I'm hearing they don't, they're not biodegradable when they're in landfill. They can't break down, so even if you use them biodegradable bags, how good is it? So why not implement a fee for buying the paper bags? It'll give people incentive to remember their bags when they wanna go to the store and go shopping. But we've gotta be mindful of people that can't afford to buy the bags, and it's gotta be some kind of program where we can, you know, maybe the stores can offer incentives by getting bags with their names on it, because it's advertising for them, so, my opinion.
Just, you wanna follow up?
Sure.
You were suggesting a fee, a fi- a, almost like a fine?
A, not a fine, but a fee, that Cambridge is doing it, Williamson is doing it, they're charging per bag at the stores. Um, and they do it in California, they've done, I've talked to a few people that live in California, they're charging per bag. Um, I was talking to somebody here beforehand, you don't get bags from a lot of stores, you gotta bring your own. BJ's for years, we brought boxes, we didn't, we didn't even have bags there, so. It, it can be done, you can shop and feed it all the time, you want your bag, so, just something to think about.
Have you seen, have you experienced any particular price for it?
Uh, I think it's ten, I think it's ten cents, I think, and beer is.
A small disincentive.
It's, it's incentive, yeah, it's incentive to bring your own bags.
Bring your own, it's incentive, oh, shoot, I forgot the best.
Right, well, yeah, and you're, and you're gonna have, actually, yeah, but people just, I talk to people all the time, you know, I can't be bothered, but you're digging into their pockets, they're gonna be up there.
And, and your suggestion was that for those who couldn't afford.
Maybe have some kind of program that the stores can donate the bags, if people then go to the community center and pick up a certain amount of bags or something. There's gotta be a way to help people that can't afford it, so we have to be mindful of people that can't afford it, so.
And so state your name.
I'm Ned Segal.
And address.
Um, Mother Street, East Hampton. Um, you said, Elaine, this is kind of almost directed to you, what about composting? I mean, I use compostable bags.
Right.
And I compost, it does degrade, paper degrades in my compost.
Okay, what, what about all the apartment buildings?
Well, no, I'm just, this, yeah, but.
I know, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, can we get something like that?
It's, that'd be a great idea, like, what?
Because, I mean, I don't use plastic, I don't use paper, except the paper that I buy mushrooms in, because you have to store your mushrooms in that.
Right, right.
But all of that gets degraded in my compost bins.
Right.
So it's like, it's, there is a way to, you know, use paper or compostable bags, you know, to, you know, eliminate all that.
Right.
But, uh, yeah, I think a lot of this is also education, we have to teach people, we can't just say, we're gonna charge you, or you're gonna, you know, whatever. I think people have to really be educated on plastic bags, because what about plastic bottles?
Yeah.
You know, that, I think, is almost worse than plastic bags. Excuse me.
Do you know how old this bottle is?
Sounds like me.
We have good water, East Hampton, we really buy a lot of water.
And in the bathroom?
Sorry, Alessandra from Twenty Two News, I live in Amherst, I'm sorry. Do you mind if you move the microphone a little bit closer to whoever can answer the question? I'm so sorry. Um, after everything has been compiled into some documentation in regards to the public input and just some ideas that you guys have, what is the next step to making everything concrete for the town? I just wanted to kinda ask what the step-by-step process would be, sorry, I know it's like hot potato, thank you.
Um, I think the first thing I wanna say with that is going to be a slow and deliberate process, and we're not looking to pass ordinance tomorrow on this issue. I think hearing from everybody and hearing where you stand on the issue, some of your concerns, or some of your confusion even, gives us the opportunity to make sure that we have the research and are able to, I, I envision in educational form about what all the options are next, and what the scientific evidence is for each of them, and what the cost to consumers and the cost to businesses would be for each of those options. So for example, I heard so far today, we're talking about biodegradable bags, which is actually different from a post-consumer bag. So in conversations with the Heasturt example, um, the hippo bags, those green bags, yeah. You know, the, the owner of the store is actually more, more, um, invested in the fact that that's, that's all recycled product that is being used with those bags. So one of the things that we need to consider is the overall life course of any product. So it, does it make more sense for us to encourage to use recycled products if we're living in a city that we don't have our own municipal waste system? Um, or should we be encouraging, um, products that won't be going into our waste system? There are many different avenues to consider here, so getting these terms out in the open and saying, okay, we need to make sure that we are going to be addressing what does it mean to be compostable? What does it mean to be disposable? As trivial as that may seem in the moment, there, you know, the science of it gets a little hairy to just, on your own, just consider what, what the best option is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I can, I can follow up on that, if we do decide that an ordinance is needed, then what we're gonna do is we'll craft, we'll craft the ordinance, it will come through our subcommittee where we'll have public hearings.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll make a recommendation to the full council, the full council will then decide to either pass it or not pass it.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so, um, I think, actually, I saw you first, and then I'll go to you. So state your name and address.
Joe Landers, Twenty Seven Howard Out, been in town about twenty years.
I'm sorry.
Joe Landers.
Joe.
Yep, Twenty Seven Howard. Um, I'd like to make a couple of suggestions and a couple of points. One, this bag has been back and forth to the redemption center probably ten or fifteen times, based on how sticky the inside is at this point. Um, I generally refuse bags from most of the vendors, I shop with canvas, with the overflow going into plastic at the grocery store. The grocery store bags, I'm single, I pull one of these bags maybe every seven to ten days with garbage. If I was actually buying kitchen bags, I'd be throwing them out half-full, because you keep garbage around longer than seven to ten days, and you have creepy crawlies coming out of there. Um, there are also, I've, I've better praise Mike Superson, I mean, these bags will take twenty or thirty pounds, so the other use that they get put to is cat litter. So I go through one or two bags a week, uh, which I will happily take as overflow for my canvas bags, and they get happily reused. Most other bags from other vendors, I don't want, I don't use, I get canvas for those. Um, these bags are recycled materials. If we were gonna institute a bag ban, I'd like to see an across-the-board, single-use bag ban. The paper bags do not tend to get recycled, if they get wet, they tear. I just spoke to my assistant, who is in Northampton and has two small children, and talked about the fact that when her overflow is in paper bags, she cannot lift them over her arm while she's holding her two-year-old by the hand. It becomes a huge problem, and they become single-use for her, because she can't really do anything else with them, whereas the plastic bags, she was reusing in her kitchen. Um, if we are looking at a bag ban of any sort, I'd like to see a bag share program started. Uh, Lenny Free had great success with that in Covington, and it has spread into Florence, and it seems like it's been a great program, and that's the case of just having bins outside the stores with bags that people can take and use, and hopefully bring back the next time they go shopping, or when they realize they have six or eight of the things hanging off the back of their kitchen door.
So for clarification, do you mean with disposable bags and bag share?
No, the bag share program tends, they're making them from all sorts of things, including birth seat bags, um, which they're now folding over and attaching, um, strapping to with grommets, and they're free to take. Uh, Coopers, for the longest time, had a sign, "Do you have a reusable bag?", "Did you forget it in your car?", right on their door. And then when people walk up to that door, you see them shake their head, turn around, and they go back to get their bag, it's great. But they have a bin inside, and there's all sorts of donated bags, so, you know, the things that Staples was giving away, that were the pummy bags, or, you know, things that people bought that were novelties and they don't care about them anymore, but they hold it in the back of groceries. And the bag share program, where people have gotten together and actually fabricated bags out of things like the birth seat bags. So if we were gonna do, if, I seriously think that the C F L is a bigger issue in the community than plastic bags, and I'd love to see the town address that and help the public drop off.
The complex fluorescents.
Yeah.
And then I'd just elaborate on the, the bag share, I think that, um, some of the breweries, maybe the Opa, Opa, were donating their, um,
Their brolly bags, yeah, the same kind of thing.
Since we have breweries in East Hampton, that might be another option for us as well, too, so.
I did, um, in, in regards to the bag share, I spoke with the breweries in East Hampton, and even the technology for the grains, um, their technology for those bags have become better, so there's not as many leftover large bags, I just thought it was interesting. But we do have a bag share in Eastworks right now, it's the one that, um, it, right now, it's more widely distributed through stores in Northampton, but there are stores in East Hampton that also participate that in the spaces donated by the owner of Eastworks as a, as a making-of bag room.
So the other thing we could consider as a city, as was suggested, you know, Biggie's gives you back a nickel if you bring your own bag, for each bag that you bring in.
Right.
And if you donate it to their jars, then they double the donations to whichever organization, which, again, they are probably the biggest producer of bags in the community. Um, I could see us passing an ordinance that required the stores to use recycled bags, or recycle both bags, um, and require that they take the bags back. Because right now, you walk into a lot of places that are giving away plastic, and they don't want it back, and they don't do anything with it, and most of the trash companies around don't have a program in place to recycle the plastic bags, so you have to bring it to Biggie's, or Whole Foods, or to one of the places that is accepting plastic.
Uh, Dolores Conway, Tom Roy Street, I've been a homeowner, um, for thirty-five years in East Hampton, and, um, like the previous speaker said, Biggie's has the, uh, the, the five cent, if you bring your own bag back, they have the biodegradable bags. My concern is that if you ban all the plastic bags, when you have the paper bags and you have a lot of items, you can't put as many items in a paper bag as you can in a plastic bag. And if you have an elder, you know, they can only lift so much, so they're gonna be going back and forth from their car, you know, to, with, with paper bags. Um, if they have a reusable bag, I have reusable bags in my car, they're in the backseat, you know, so that they're always there. The other thing is, with the paper bags, if something gets wet, it falls out. Specifically, like if you have chicken, you know, raw chicken, hamburger, anything like that, they will ask you if you want it in plastic, because then you can put it in your, 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 uh, either paper bag or your, um, reusable bag. If not, it's gonna leach and contaminate either, whether it's a plastic, um, you know, like the, the ones that, you know, Trader Joe's has, or, you know, even, even Big Y now, um, or if you have the, the canvas ones, what are you gonna do? You gotta wash it out, you gotta bleach it, you know, um, you have to worry about cross-contamination with the other products in your bag, whether it's fruit, you know, or whatever. Um, I try and use as many, um, of the reusable bags as possible, but when I do get a plastic bag, I reuse it, you know, like the previous speaker said, for cat litter, or, or dog poop, or, um, you know, something like that, or trash can, you know, liners. And, uh, you know, I, paper bags, you know, we're still cutting down trees. And we're really worried, it was a, some, I forgot who the lady was that addressed it in the paper, she said, "Paper bags, we're still cutting down trees." I mean, I grew up in town here, and, and previously, and like the first lady said, the paper bags, you know, "Oh, we get rid of the paper bags, and we'll have the plastic bags", well, now we're reinventing the wheel, we're still cutting down trees. So there's, there's gotta be a happy, a happy medium about this. I, I just don't feel that you can just say, "Okay, no more plastic bags in town", some of them do serve a purpose.
And I think, just to, one of the things, I know that, um, Northampton, within their ordinance, they exempted, um, bags for, um, vegetables and meats and those types of things. Um, so that would definitely be something that we would research further, uh, as, as far as to that concern, yes?
Uh, Ann Holstein, also Mother Street. I'm so happy, I was so happy to see this in the paper that you're considering this, and it's great to hear from everyone. So my thoughts are a little scattered, because they're now taking in what people are saying, but, um, I do think, I think you said, Tamara, that part of what will need to be done is educate and encourage people, and I think that is an important thing to hold up, however it comes across and however long it might be phased in or whatever. Um, I did read in some research that, uh, when Ireland put a, a price, I think they put a ten-cent price on bags, use dropped ninety percent in two weeks. So I do think, when you're talking about people still needing to use for plastic bags, I think the idea of putting a price on it, and we, that came up earlier, I have read, but it seems to run low of five cents, high of twenty cents in Aspen, Colorado. Point that out.
They got the money.
I, I think that that, that gives people an option, but I think it is also an incentive that showed in Ireland that a whole lot of people are not gonna pay for that bag, so. Um, the other thing, just, uh, Tamara, you said something about that our green city designation is about energy consumption, but let's not forget the oil that goes into plastic, making plastic, and apparently, um, about twelve million barrels of oil a year are used in our country to reuse plastic bags. So I think it does fit in with our, um, green designation. And the last thing on the bag share, which I think is, you know, seems to be working really well in a lot of places, if, I think that one idea I had of kinda hooking up our green city designation with our art city designation is we might as well do something through the Arts Commission to, say, sponsor a drink competition to design a bag logo, and then get people, maybe businesses or whatever, to donate a certain, you know, to be able to buy the bags, and then have a East Hampton logo, and then have those be in the bag share. And I, you know, it kinda tie things together, so that.
Let's figure the bear is now around back.
Yeah.
We're actually making a logo for National Park, as we speak, we're in a meeting in about two minutes, and we're gonna be talking, we're making a logo, a new logo, so that's something, I want to have somebody make one, yeah.
Well, they did that for the East Ham farmers market when they first started a couple of years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you, in the bathroom.
Wendy Taylor, Jordan, Sheldon Avenue, I'm the manager of the Parsons Closet. A lot of the donations I get come in, say, in plastic bags that someone got at the mall, or in trash bags. Now, if this ordinance, if there is an ordinance and it were to pass, would that mean? Right now, I give, I use those bags to, for other people's purchases. If, the trash bags, if somebody comes in and buys, say, a bedspread or blankets that are too big to go in a small bag, I'll throw it in a trap, in a class, trash bag that someone has donated to me. But since that's all plastic, will I have to stop handing those things out? Will I have to start throwing them away?
Uh, I mean, I think, just the, uh, off the top of my head, I would say that probably trash bags and things of that nature would not be covered by this, I think we're looking at single-use plastic.
Okay, but, but like the bags, if somebody's, someone got a bag from Target and filled it with clothes and gave it to me.
It would not be illegal in the city of East Hampton.
Okay.
It just, it just means that the vendors in East Hampton, um, would not be able to use them to give out their products, potentially.
No, but that's what I would be doing, I'd be using it to give out the product.
No, and, and what I'm saying is, the, the stores, if you're, if you're giving away product, or if you're, um, I, I think the way Northampton did it for the Survival Center, um, or some of the pantries, um, they, it was exempted for them to, to be able to use the plastic bags, because they came in the plastic bags. It wasn't something that was being sold on premises, and a new plastic bag was being given out.
Okay.
So that's something that we would consider, obviously, yeah. Yes?
Uh, my name is Pat Coon, I live in Florence, but I, um, I rent a business space in East Hampton, and I do most of my shopping at Biggie's, and I love their bags. I reuse them, and as a matter of fact, a friend of mine donates her, her bags to me, too, because I use them. And I brought this bag because I went to Walmart, and I bought, I don't know, toothpaste, something really small, and they gave me this gigantic bag, and it's a pretty heavy one, and I don't know what to do with it except throw it in the paper recycling bin. And if you go to Northampton and stand outside Walmart for a while and take a look, you'll see a lot of these bags coming out, and saying, "Stop and shop", I asked Bert the other day, uh, how many people brought their own bags, he said, "Oh, maybe about a third of them". So there are a lot of these bags going out, even though they ban the plastic bags.
Yes?
The, when you have paper.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Leah Finch, Nipper Avenue, um, homeowner in East Hampton for more than ten years. Um, when you have the plastic bags, they end up in the ocean and like destroying marine life, whereas if you use the paper bags, you can use them in your compost, or you can recycle the bags, and so they don't, my understanding, I mean, if you, if you go home and you look on YouTube about the big plastic island in the sea that's destroying marine life, that's destroying the ocean, there, it's not paper bags that are doing that, it's plastic. So, I mean, that's sort of been my concern, and my, my daughter as well, it struck us a few years ago that, um, that that was. It struck us a few years ago that that was something that was really happening, that the ocean's really being destroyed by one-time-used plastic that ends up on the beaches. Even if you go to Florida, you can see there's plastic applicators, plastic syringes. The plastic washes back up on the shore. It's really, that's not something that paper does. I mean, I think ideally it's bringing your own bags. It's bringing your own bags to the store, keeping them in your car and reusing them. And if you have to wash them or rinse them, wash them or rinse them. And not being, you know, insane about the whole thing, but making exceptions that if you're going to get donations, okay, you're reusing a plastic bag. That's, you know, it's not like an all or nothing situation. I'm not going to lie to you and sit here and say that I never use a plastic bag. That'd be a lie. I do. I try to reuse the bags whenever I get them. But now that Walmart has the paper bags, I'm really not walking in there with not my bags. Because they, they aren't as, they're not as convenient as a plastic bag with a handle. There's no two ways about it. They're not as convenient. But it's more, there's more to it than just convenience. And it seems like such a great idea that we're all talking about it and that we could come to some kind of a resolution. That's helpful. There's not going to be a perfect solution to this. It's, you know, we buy things, we use things. If you wanted to not use plastic, you would have to bend over backwards. I mean, I don't know how you would get to the point where you would stop using plastic. My daughter took with the same reusable, we quit buying Ziploc bags. We quit buying all those bags many, many years ago. And she started taking a reusable sack with all of her lunch. And, yes, using compostable bags and bringing the same one back. And I put it in the dishwasher with the rest, which I'm sure is bad too, environmentally, with the rest of my stuff. And then I would repack her lunch in it. And I'm telling you, we still luckily have the same bag that we had from the time she was in elementary school, those like little sacks. And that's been great because that's a lot of Ziploc bags. So like, we try to do our best at my house, knowing that there's no way to be perfect at it and that you can't have an end-all, black-and-white. It has to be some sort of policy where you take a look at, you know, like, what's the better thing to do? I think that's all we can ever do is what's the better thing to do, you know?
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, Dave Strong, Meadowbrook Drive. You have to touch on that point as well as a couple of the other ones. I think a big issue that you brought up was single-use. And I think that definition is going to be tricky. Because like other people have said, and I myself brought one of the Biggie's bags with me, I've never used one of these just for the groceries and then thrown it out. I've, this is, this is my trash bag at home. I don't buy trash bags. And this is certainly much better for the environment than any of the trash bags you're going to buy. So I think, in relation to the bags in East Hampton, Biggie's, I think this ordinance is kind of unnecessary in that respect. Now, I'm not saying it's unnecessary to try to be, you know, conserve, reduce, reuse, recycle. Absolutely. Educate, definitely. So the idea is you don't even have to have an ordinance. People are going to want to bring reusable bags. They're going to reuse plastic bags. I'm not trying to say, you know, don't do anything. But at the same time, I think charging people per bag, that's going to get very complicated for the businesses and for the customer as to, well, how many bags are they using? They're going to try to put more, you know, it's just, I think it's a ridiculous idea, honestly. Because I think it's just impractical. And again, has, have you all read what's on these bags as far as how environmentally good they are compared to any other plastic bag? Are you all aware of that? Would you like?
Just for clarification's sake, so I can make sure I'm hearing you the right way. One of your objections to any ordinance is?
Freedom of consumer choice would definitely be one. And in relation to Biggie, which is the only supermarket in East Hampton, they're ahead of the curve on this already by using these bags, by giving the five cent credit, ten cent doubled credit for people that bring in the reusable bags in the form of a donation. But I think if you're going to start charging for these, it's going to make it more attractive to just buy trash bags that are way worse to the environment than these bags are. And like I said, this is, I don't know if anybody else buys trash bags, but I don't. And I'm a homeowner and I've been one for years. And this is my trash bag. And like one of the other ladies said, you know, your trash doesn't stick around that long instead of having a big, black, heavy trash bag or things like cat litter picking up after your dog. There's so many practical purposes for reusing. So that's why I say they're not really single-use. So if you're willing to exempt these from your ordinance, I'm perfectly fine. If you want to tackle styrofoam, plastic bottles, all that other stuff, I'll probably agree with you. But I would say exempt the Biggie's bags because they're doing the right thing.
I think we were quite impressed with Biggie's being ahead of the curve and wanted to see how that, if it made any sense to continue with other businesses or to look at other matters. But education is the key.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely.
And also in our preliminary discussions, we acknowledged the fact that those are a much better choice than, say, one you might get somewhere else. And I think as we look at this ordinance and as we, I think that will definitely be taken into the equation. So, you know, I don't think we're necessarily looking to ban Biggie's from using recyclable bags that are, you know, I don't think, that was my direction.
Okay, great.
Any other thoughts?
I just have a quick question. Are those, are the Biggie's bags, are they thicker? Do they thicken fly or?
They have a seam on the bottom.
The power strip.
Yeah.
Reinforce bottom ceiling.
Makes it ten times stronger and leak-proof, no double-bagging. These will hold, in terms of weight, they will hold the same as my Candace's bag. They will hold more than I'm comfortable putting on, you know, carrying.
I think we did have a question. Could we get a state name?
Molly Finch, Nipper Ave. I'm just curious what people think about banning styrofoam.
I'm a fan of that.
No opposition?
No. Great.
So Tamara, let it take time.
Okay. When we started discussing this, there are two very different factors going on with plastics versus the styrofoam. Plastic being about waste and how to control the waste. Whereas the styrofoam, particularly for food and beverages, have carcinogens in them. And so it's a different type of a health issue with plastic bags. So for the purpose of bringing forth the discussion, we decided to break them out since the implications of using different types of plastic bags are so different from the implications of styrofoam versus cardboard. So we'll definitely be also approaching that in subsequent meetings. But for this meeting, we're really focusing on the plastic bags for that reason.
Any other thoughts?
Just to, Dolores Conway again, just to get back to the Biggie's plastic bags. I can put three or four two-liter bottles of soda in one of those plastic bags. And because I'm now a little incapacitated because of my knee replacement, I can bring it up the stairs, just carrying it with my cane. If I had to put the same thing in a paper bag, it would fall right through the paper bag. And because, like I said, I, you know, walked the earth when the dinosaurs were here. I remember they used to put double-bag. They used to have the plastic bag with the paper bag on the inside. Remember that? Yeah. So, you know, I mean, and I agree with the lady. I can, you know, put the canvas bag, those hold as much as my canvas bag. And he does a great job. I don't think he should be penalized. He gives back to the community. He's the first one, when anybody wants a donation for anything, he's right there on the front lines, be it children, be it school, be it church, be it, you know, anybody. And he hires, you know, anybody in the store to give them a chance. You know, kids, elders, people who are disabled, you know, he's, I don't think he should be penalized. Counselor?
I just wanted to say thank you for doing this because I think it's a really important conversation for East Hampton to have. I think especially in light of the fact that we do want to have our own healthcare services. And I would agree with you, you know, Biggie's has absolutely done great things for the community. And finding a balance between what works and what doesn't, it's just makes this a really solid public forum. Thanks, everybody, for cutting. And I'm looking forward to what you guys have to add.
Any other thoughts? Yes?
Hi, Mo Bellevue, East Hampton Chamber of Commerce. And I just, as we progress through this progress, I would just ask that we, as a community, as we're trying to do the best for our environment and our community and the globe at large, that we're also sensitive to our smaller businesses, because there's many smaller businesses, smaller than Biggie's, who could potentially be very much impacted. And folks who are dealing with takeout food and that sort of thing as far as implementation of whatever it is that we come up with and sensitivity to that so that folks can adapt and grow into that.
Sure. With the Chamber, are you willing to look at working with Biggie's? You can buy these in bulk so you could allow the small businesses to buy in through the Chamber? That seems like a smart idea.
I could certainly ask that question. I don't know that.
Just came to you right there. So, in the back.
Annette, okay, I know we're all leaning for getting, you know, Biggie's bags and I think it's fantastic. But you know what? We don't need to use bags all the time. If you go to a store, you can use your shirt. You know, you can use your pockets if you forget to bring a bag. And it's the same thing with if you're getting food takeout. You don't need to have the cartons put into a bag. I mean, it's just, I would rather just educate people more on not using as much bags, going for cloth bags, going for canvas bags. The Biggie's bags are fantastic. I don't use them because I bring my own bags. But it's a thing of trying to educate people to use less bags. Use less everything. Buy less things. But, you know, it's just a matter of using less and just not having to. You can always say, "No, I don't want a bag." You know, if all they have is plastic bags. And, but, I mean, I just, I would really like to just see, you know, like I said, more education for people so that they can understand why the plastic bags are so bad.
And we'll take you and then it seems like you have.
Besides, you can hang Biggie's bags off of a bicycle.
Not that many times.
And state name for it.
John Danelli, I own Nene's Restaurant here in East Hampton. And so I represent one of the small businesses that Mo was speaking of. You know, I guess my only, I, Nene's, since I've owned Nene's, I've only currently owned Nene's for five years, but we've transitioned several of the containers that we use. Some of them we can, you know, repurpose, we can actually support dishwasher safe, things like that. But, but some of them are still maybe not the most perfect ideal container to actually ship something out of. You know, again, cross-contamination, spillage, things like that. So I think that my major concern and the reason I'm here today is the idea of almost forcing the hand of these small shops. You know, it's kind of, it's a nice idea, but in the, for the sake of like encouraging commerce in East Hampton, I would say, you know, putting an ordinance in place that says, you know, "You can't do this," you know, it's kind of, I feel like a little bit drastic. You know, and I get the idea, I guess sometimes drastic things kind of need to be put into place. But we're such a small town and there's so many small businesses, you know, that I don't know if we need to almost implement an ordinance in order to kind of, you know, I would say educating them and kind of encouraging them to go in that direction would be the nicest way to go. But to say that we need to stamp this and put it in concrete and say, "You cannot use plastic" in our town, I think seems a little harsh and it's, you know, it's a bit aggressive. You know, I mean, like I said, I'm actually constantly kind of looking for better outs to kind of package the food and kind of let it leave the restaurant. And we've probably got about seventy percent there. But again, there's still that thirty percent that we're still working on just because it's, there's nothing truly ideal in the idea of being, you know, green. You know, and just because it's a food-based product, there's that cross-contamination. So in order to kind of, and I know right now the restaurant industry is kind of popping and here in East Hampton, you know, there's a lot of like the licenses, things like that going on. And I love the idea that, so it's kind of like going, well, you have to become, you know, put it set in this mold, it's another set of parameters that these guys that are trying to come into town have to jump through, an obstacle that we're kind of creating. And that's kind of something that I just don't want it to inhibit new businesses from coming to town by saying, "You have to conform to this idea."
I've got a quick question for you.
Yeah.
If I may. You said you serve a lot of takeout.
Absolutely.
Some different meals. Different kinds of meals, warm meals, we all go together. How would you ideally package them and yet remain as green as possible?
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, honestly, we used to, we used to probably be about ninety percent styrofoam, honestly. And right now, our primary source of containers is actually used, the nine-inch and the six-inch containers that we use are actually made from recycled plastic. And they actually are dishwasher and microwave safe. So you can actually recycle them by actually repurposing them. You could actually put them in your dishwasher, our takeout containers, and really like use them as Tupperware. Come to the restaurant, I'll show you other work. And that's, right now, that's about, that's the largest quantity of takeout containers that we use. Like soup cups, those are actually something that's kind of a paper product right now. All of the pizza boxes are cardboard, they're all recycled. We do have a styrofoam container that we, we kind of use it as a, I would say that that's probably something that's, I don't know, like.
My chicken parm to go.
Is it a plastic container? Plastic container, not in styrofoam.
Styrofoam.
Oh, okay, that's, well, that's interesting. So that's another, like actually for leftovers. So, you know, because it's actually a more inexpensive product for us to actually give you to take home your leftovers. So that's probably, that, again, is probably one of those, you know, items that we're kind of working on hitting the price points in order to, you know, put your leftovers in and kind of get into that way. But, I mean, like I said, we're still, we're still working on it, but we have a large quantity of that stuff worked out. But it's still trying to find that perfect mix of cost and efficiency and, you know.
In substituting for styrofoam, I'm thinking in the little take-home, go out to eat, can eat as much as you're serving perhaps.
Right, 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 right.
Isn't there, is there a paper?
Of course, of course. Oh, yeah, yeah, very so. There's a pulp paper product. Generally, we're a sauce joint, you know, like, so we have a lot of wet materials. So again, you actually put something that's saucy inside a pulp paper product. If you ever done it before, it basically collapses. So it's structural integrity. A lot of times right now, we're actually looking at, for lack of a better word, the Chinese takeout containers. So you'll see something like the Lomain or something like that, which will be a waxed cardboard, generally with an aluminum handle. Those will generally work better. But again, when stacking, they collapse on themselves. So at the size that we would need them. So that's why we kind of went with a larger, heavier plastic. But again, it's actually intent, is actually for repurposing. And it actually indicates that on the container's package, you know, like on the back of the thing, it says it's recyclable, it says it's dishwasher safe. So the idea is you can actually run it in your dishwasher, reuse it as Tupperware anytime you want, multiple times, and hopefully they do it that way. Now, I'm actually going, I think I should put that out there on somewhere that we actually do that. But, but we really don't. But I'm aware of the fact that.
Can I stop?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just want to, I want to get back, if we were talking about styrofoam containers, this would be a really great discussion.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So my question is, do you use plastic bags?
We do, yes.
Okay, and so, and I know that Amy's does as well.
Yes, yeah.
And so I guess, you know, have you looked into the type of bag that Biggie's use?
Uh, no, not at all. Yeah, I honestly, I shop at Biggie's and I honestly have never really paid attention to the green value of it, to be completely honest with you. And, and it's kind of interesting, like this brought it to my attention now. And it's something that I'll look into too. And, you know, if it's something I can get from my distributors, I'm glad to do, you know. But as far as, they are convenient, they do, you know, the, we use the, it's called the T-shirt bag in the industry. It's a one-use plastic bag, again. And it's for that, that everything that they've touched base on is really the utilization of it within the industry. It holds a huge amount of weight. It is actually great. It's plastic, it's clean, you know, they're sealed.
It's a high quality.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you know, storage is, so there is a reason why they're so popular. You know, that is not, you know, the single-use T-shirt plastic bag.
So here's my question.
Yeah.
Would your concerns still stand? Because you, you started kind of mentioning that if we pass an ordinance, it might be inhibitive of businesses.
Right, and that's really the only reason I feel that we need to go there. I think that the idea of saying, you know, you can't, starting off with, you know, a wall of, "You can't do something."
But if that ordinance stated you should use a bag that has some of these recyclable qualities in your, because I mean, I think.
Well, I think that, you know, the verbiage within all of that. I mean, how much language would have to be built into that ordinance? And who would be able to sit down, as a business owner, "I'm so busy day-to-day. Let me look at this ordinance and really figure out exactly what the verbiage says." I don't have time to do that. Then I'm going to, you know, I'm going to start my business, I'm going to go to my food reps, I'm going to go to my purveyors, they're going to provide some options for packaging. I'm going to select one. Who's going to police the fact that I didn't select the appropriate bag within the verbiage of all the ordinance? That's really kind of where I'm at. It's really not free-flowing. You know, I love them using the green bag and again, if I can get ahold of them, you know, and it's within my. you know, and it's within my purveyors, I will gladly do it. I have no problem with that. But the idea of saying, "No." I, I think that to start off any kind of, you know, we're trying to, as a, as a business here in town, I love the idea of where East Hampton's going, and I love that everybody's coming to this town, but how many knows can we put before somebody looks somewhere else? And that's really kind of where I'm concerned, you know what I mean? And I, I just feel like this, I don't think it may eventually be a necessity to kind of get an ordinance in place, but I don't know if we're right there yet. That's just what I, you know, how I feel about it.
Joel Landers again. Just to address your concern, how would you feel if the city, Northampton sells the, everybody in town, trash bags? What if East Hampton City of sold all its vendors' plastic bags?
I think that, as a business owner, I think that it's, I, I, again, I have no problem even buying the bags. But I think that it creates another obstacle. I mean, is East Hampton going to bring it to my restaurant? Is, is, am I going to have to come and pick it up? You know, ease of use is always.
Well, you pay, you pay shipping already for your bags.
Well, it's also built into a larger shipment of other products that I'm getting. But again, the convenience always is the biggest obstacle for any of these situations. And I think that that's, that's something that you always have to keep in mind. I think the reason those bags are so popular is, again, they're convenient. That green bag, you know, I feel like that green bag's an excellent decision, and, and I love the idea behind it. And again, I'm going to look into it. But as far as me coming to City Hall once a week to buy my, my stack of bags and bring it back to my establishment, I don't have enough time to do it. So, so that.
But City of, of Northampton sells them at multiple venues.
Well, again, I mean, if it's convenient enough, I mean, I would be glad to look into it. But, but as far as creating another obstacle for commerce to take place in East Hampton, you know what I mean, we're, you know, you see there's, you know, Northampton just had an ad about how many empty storefronts they have. We have almost as many, if not more so, right here on Cotton Street. And I would love to see them all full. And I don't want anybody to say, "Hey, we need to put more obstacles to get these guys coming in and creating new jobs and, and business for the town," you know.
If I may, just quickly. I think some people are in, that your business now has recyclable plastic containers. I'm not sure, I'm not sure everybody here in the room in Nini's serves on their, on their takeout or on their.
Oh, I mean, all the pizza boxes, all.
And people learn, you learned about the green, the green bag.
Right, today, yeah, exactly.
I'm thrilled that this is part of the state. I think there's an exchange of ideas.
Oh, don't get me wrong, I've seen them, but I didn't know, I just thought they were a green bag. You know what I mean? So I've been to Biggie's several times.
I wonder if we're promoting our recyclability law.
Well, you have the press.
So, continue to go forward here. So, I think in the back, we had a question, and then we'll sit a couple more people on the front.
I think we need to ask ourselves if the environment is more important or convenience? I think the environment is more important.
She's Molly Finch.
Yeah.
Molly Finch.
Good question.
Yeah, I'd like to, Anne Holstein, Mother Street. I'd like to just piggyback on what Molly said about convenience. I think we talked about education, and I think, you know, a big part of this is convenience for everyone, you know, for everyone who's used them. But as she said, a, a single-use plastic bag is used for twenty minutes. That's been determined. It has a twenty-minute life. That bag has a thousand-year life in a landfill. So there, you know, not just plastic bags, but we as a populace, I'm happy to be in a town that is bringing this up, and I hope we're going to be looking at lots of other things in terms of our, our, you know, not just us, but the whole world. We have to start going beyond convenience for the sake of the earth. I mean, that's really it. And how we work that out, hopefully, we can work it out so it works for people. And you don't want to totally inconvenience someone, but then again, people will be inconvenienced. So I just, you know, I think that twenty-minute use for something that's going to last a thousand years, they do not decompose, they do not biodegrade.
If you, if you'd indulge me very briefly, I'd like to just tell a little anecdote or story from my experience earlier this afternoon. So I rode my bike, bikes with my kids from my house down to the pond, and we went to Mount Tom's and had some ice cream. And we went to the boardwalk to eat our ice cream. And we were leaning over the edge of the boardwalk, and from our vantage point, we saw at least three, there was at least three from where we could see plastic bags in the water. So I think it is important to recognize that these bags are ending up in landfills, are ending up in the ocean, because, you know, oftentimes that's where garbage bulk travels, but it's also ending up in our pond. And I'm sitting there eating my ice cream, looking at these plastic bags that are in our pond, watching people fish from across the pond. And, and these don't degrade. They break down into smaller pieces of plastic, which then the fish will eat. So I think it's important to understand, so convenience is one thing, but the prevalence of these crap, plastic bags from Family Dollar, from the pharmacies in town, from, you know, stores that are selling candy, and just, you know, mindlessly putting stuff in a plastic bag and handing it to you when you don't even necessarily need a bag. The prevalence of that is high enough that I feel like it's irresponsible as someone who represents the city to not start taking action and looking at this. And so, that's, that's just from my experience today, you know. And I've been watching this, I have, you know, video, because last week I saw one of these plastic bags flying down.
Yeah.
I mean, it's beautiful, like flies like a bird, but it's, it's also kind of sad. So, some people are responsible, some people reuse them. And some people take the plastic bag, toss it, it's caught in the wind. And that's another big difference between plastic bags and paper bags, is the wind catches these, and they travel. And oftentimes they end up in the water.
Or trees.
So that's, that's one of the things that kind of, when Counselor Smith brought this forward, I said, "This is worth taking a look at." Any other, Counselor Hayes, did you have something?
Well, just, when you were saying obstacles to business, I don't necessarily agree with that, because I think there's a lot of businesses coming to East Hampton because of the change in, and it's because people are here that are moving here because we do things like this, because they want to be part of a community that will help to green the environment.
Sure.
So that's.
Well, like I said, I mean, I oppose the idea, I mean, honestly, just kind of taking the idea of saying, "We, we oppose a certain type of plastic," something to that extent. But again, I think that, you know, if you start building this document of what you can and can't do, it, it could get lost in that. There's an idea of like, okay, we have this, we, we know the bag, you know what I mean? We know the bag you're talking about, everybody in the room knows the bag. I mean, it's basically, you know, the, what is it, the pink elephant, white elephant in the room? We know the bag. So if you say, "We're just specifically outlawing this bag," you know? This, you know what I mean? It, it just seems like it could just get so convoluted. Correct, you know what I mean? And it's, it's kind of like, you know, as a, as a future business owner approaching East Hampton going, "God, I have to read the, the law on paper bags here in East Hampton." And, and it just seems like, just, let's call it that bag and say, "That's the bag. We're not going to let that bag exist in East Hampton." But I feel like, again, there's so many points of view that could just keep my mind.
Right, but that's how public policy works, that's how everybody comes in and thinks.
Many facet additions.
Sir, can you please state your name?
My name's Albert Park, Wenton Lovefield Street. And, you know, I had the fortune of being able to live in Europe for about a year and a half. And one of the norms there, and a good portion of that time was in Munich, and Germany is a very environmentally sensitive country, where everything is recycled. And one of the norms there was multi-use plastic bags that were like several, I don't know how many there are, but, but they were a buck apiece. And so, it was natural that people would just sort of bring them with them, because they were really sturdy, they were really reusable, and they were covered in advertising for whatever the market was. I make this point not to talk about the money, but to talk about the social norm. You know, that, to some degree, what I think you're talking about is helping to educate, as was mentioned earlier, helping to educate as to why this norm is important for the community, for the world, for the earth, all of that. You know, I think it's really wonderful that, and it says something, that some of the businesses in this community are already doing stuff without being asked. You know, I would love to know that Nini's uses plastic that I can use again and fill up another cupboard with plastic. But, you know, so that is going to take a little bit of a, a push. I really hear the idea that, like, the question of whether or not it's an ordinance, whether or not it's a rule, and there's a rigid bar that we set, whether or not that is necessary. I hear that is a really strong flavor in, in part of the conversation. And I just want to say that part of the, the formula that kind of has to be taken into consideration is what are the values of this community? And it's sounding to me like this is kind of what this conversation is really about, is like, what are we valuing and how are we prioritizing that? Right? And perhaps some clarity around that might, might help to guide some future discussion. Although I'm very enthused by this form in general.
You know, and I think, I think to, to step off that point, you know, as far as the idea of norms and, and, you know, what we value as a community, I, I feel pretty strongly that ordinances, you know, I've been the chair of ordinance committee for ten years now, but I, I feel like they can be a catalyst for discussion in the community. And so, and I paid attention pretty closely to Northampton as they were going through this process. And, and I think that they kind of use that, I mean, they had, they partnered with some committees, they had someone walk through downtown covered in plastic bags, they put up signs in all the businesses, and it became a catalyst to, to spur discussion around how people use bags. So, and, and so, I mean, I get the part that people don't necessarily like ordinances because they're, they're rules, but I think that they can be useful in, in certain venues, especially around education.
Again, Northampton is not East Hampton. And I think that, you know, we have to take into consideration, Northampton does have huge anchor stores, it has Walmart, it has Stop &amp; Shop, and I believe it has Big Y, it has CVS, it has Brooks, it has Walgreens. This is East Hampton, I mean, we're still a fairly small town. Yeah, I think our footprint, the, the plastic that we're creating in this town is nowhere near what Northampton is producing. I mean, if you're going to compare us to Northampton, you know, look at the number of stores in Northampton, and look at the number of stores here in East Hampton. They already have so many shops and places, that of course they really do need to have an ordinance in place. I agree with them completely. Where we're at here in East Hampton, we do have them, stores are using them. But if you compare the number of stores here in East Hampton that are actually using them to the number of stores in Northampton that are actually using them, I'm sure it'd be drastically different, you know what I mean? I mean, Walmart.
It is economies of scale, it is economies of scale. I mean, like, we're geographically smaller than North, I mean, and, you know, don't get me started on anchor stores, because they're getting pulled down for sure.
Okay, well, that's, well, I'm saying that.
We're talking about Walmart, we don't have any anchor stores.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the fact that Walmart alone, I'm sure produces ten times as many as Biggie's. I, I mean, you know what I mean? So, so of course that's something to consider. I mean, when you, when you think of somebody that's producing a number of bags, Walmart, I think, is probably the largest consumer of those bags. And, and we don't have one here, so do we need an ordinance in order to stop what small amounts of businesses are actually using?
We are going to have a Stop &amp; Shop here.
Well, yeah, well, eventually, yeah.
I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate particularly that you're a business owner talking, because I think one of the, when you look at the number of stakeholders in an issue like this, there's very different issues for someone who's conducting business versus someone who's consuming business in the city. And I think the comment about, do we care more about the environment or about the convenience? I think the third thing can be added to that, and that is the cost. So what I'm hearing from you is that business owners are faced with a lot of decisions about, here are all these different products that are possible, and again, comes back to the education of products, of what would be the best case. You know, speaking to the, to the sociology of society, certainly, we have several instances, particularly with the environment. The environment is a social problem, doesn't have a, doesn't have a very seeable victim. The earth is so abstract and so large, that we don't necessarily see it as the same emergency as other social problems. And it's been shown, time and time again, that when the laws change, the behavior subsequently changes. And it usually starts with, you know, a flurry of resentment in the first year, and then it just becomes normalized as behavior that has just shifted as society changes. And I think what you're really touching upon is how do we do that without businesses feeling that they're being too constricted within our community and feeling that change that they're not asking for is being forced upon them? So, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, I also hear what a lot of the consumers are saying. And I don't think any one of these points is more valid than the other point. It would be like apples to oranges, these are just the different facets of the social problem that we need to consider. So, that, I would also be really interested to see what, what businesses came to East Hampton with the hopes that they could have more environmentally friendly products that they're giving their customers and are, are attracted to East Hampton or could be attracted to East Hampton because of the green consumerism. So when we're looking at costs, I think it does need to. So you're really saying two things. One is the, the freedom of private businesses to choose how, what products they want to have, and the other is the cost. So I just want to make sure that that's layered out there, that it's not all bundled together, because it's two separate issues.
Right, and I, I think that that's a big portion of it, absolutely. I think that, you know, if you kind of say, you know, like I said, I think there's, there's, there's one bag, I feel like that's the one that we seem to all be, like, talking about. And, and you know, and, and for me, it's an easy enough fix. You know, so I have no problem with it, it's kind of like, okay, that's the idea. But at the same time, it's like, the, the idea of putting an ordinance on it, I think that that's where I'm kind of more concerned, you know what I mean? And I'm, like I said, Nini's itself is, you know, we're trying to move in, in a, in a more green direction. You know, but, but it, but again, it's really finding that right product. So for me to say, you know, "Well, tomorrow, they're going to put an ordinance in place, and I have to find the right product," that's just, you know, another pressure you're adding for business, and that.
Oh, and that would be a pressure with one day turnaround.
Well, well, I mean, you know, generally, I feel like most of the, they seem to creep up on us when we're running the business, I think the deadlines seem to creep up on us, you know.
Rest assured, that will be a slow and deliberate process.
Yeah, yeah.
And if there is an ordinance to be passed, it will have a timeline that allows everyone to use up.
And it'll be, and it'll be a part of the.
Turn for, turn for a K online.
Well, I think another part of that is that, that, you know, like, we can't do this, um, business can't do it on their own, we, the city can't do it on their own, this is going to have to be a collaborative effort. And I think, you know, it's, you know, it's good for us to have people like you in the community that, that have been here for a long time. You know, I mean, I know you just bought it five years ago, but I know you've been here for a long time.
I inherited it.
But, but you grew up in the area, so you care about this place. So, so when we say, you're, you're like, you know, "I'm going to look at these." But, you know, bigger stores like Rite Aid or Family Dollar, they don't have that kind of connection to our community.
Right.
And they're not necessarily going to be, "Hey, this is the right thing to do, so we're going to try." That's where, you know, for you, I mean.
Well, I think that, that, not to interrupt, but I think that that's, it almost, I think that smaller businesses in town will take, you know, like, personally, it, it almost feels more like something like Rite Aid and, and Family Dollars can, like, can, you know, the word, I don't know, like, it almost like, wow, they can absorb the cost, yes. So when you, when you talk about a smaller business, it, it does, it does affect us in that way. And it does seem almost, you know, those companies don't care that you guys are even having this meeting. So, you know, and those are the guys that are probably producing most of those plastic bags. So, so those guys are, they're not showing up here today because they're not concerned about it. But, you know, "Hey, I'm showing up because it's going to affect me in some way, shape, or form."
So, gentleman in the back, in the.
Albert Park again, Lovefield Street. So, going back to the idea of social norms, I know that it was brought up earlier, the idea of charging people a nickel or a dime for a bat. And ideally, obviously, that would be a multi-use bat. I'm curious, I, I mentioned that again, because essentially what that does is that it incentivizes behavior, which people might, like, balk at, like, oh, I, you know, it's another tax or whatever, but it changes behavior, which perhaps is kind of what part of this discussion is. The other piece is that it actually does not pass the, the burden onto the business, it passes it onto the consumer. Um, and really, it's the consumer who consumes these products. So, I just kinda wanted to throw that out as an idea that perhaps it's not about the ordinance of you can or you can't, but it's your, i- it, it might be something to talk about, whether or not it does make sense to, uh, research how, um, nickel, dime per bag does affect a tax behavior.
It's a decent amount of communities that do do that.
Yeah.
So, and that's, that's part of our research that we've kind of compiled.
So what I was gonna say was, in response to the Family Dollar and things like that that are not at the meeting and probably really don't care what we're talking about, that's why we need an ordinance. Whether it's an ordinance to require all businesses in town to charge for plastic bags, or whether it was an ordinance to require all businesses in town to purchase their bags through a city purchasing department, or whether it was an ordinance that mandated certain kinds of bags, it will take an ordinance.
And did you, Albert?
What I've been experiencing at the Parsons Closet is probably two-thirds of my customers either bring their own bags or they tell me not to bo- not to bother to bag. The ones who, usually the ones who ask me to bag are people who are walking. And, like, w- when the store first opened eleven years ago, I went over to Mike Superson and I said, if we run low on plastic bags, can I just come over and get some bags out of your recycle bin? And he said, if you need bags over there, just come, ask me for them, and he gives me, he'll give me boxes of them. In eleven years, I am on the fourth box of bags from him. So, most, most of what goes out, goes out in either, either just in people's hands or in bags that have already come to me. Now, if this ordinance is passed and there's a charge for each bag that people take out, that's going to become a bookkeeping nightmare for, okay, who am I paying this five or ten cents to and keeping track of how many bags I-
That's, that's important for us to take into consideration, so.
Yeah, and if, and if what I'm giving them is a bag that's already been recycled, that's, you know, that's not, say, one of the new bags that I got from Mike, but it's something that's already come in, that's-
That's something that we would absolutely take into consideration.
Okay.
Could there just be a way just to, you know, some sort of campaign to encourage businesses it to, to do so, rather than a, an ordinance to force it? I, I think that that would be, you know, at least the, the preliminary way to go. I think the idea of saying, hey, you know, you'll get a, you know, some sort of sticker that says, hey, East Hampton, we're supporting this thing, this idea of utilizing, you know, you know, you know, some sort of benefits to the business, we put it in our window, say, hey, we conform to some sort of platform that the town believes is a more green platform. And, and rather than saying, hey, we're gonna set this in stone and say, you must conform. Is there a way to say, hey, we're going to create a program that says, we're gonna encourage you, and we're gonna say, we're gonna promote the fact that you are one of these businesses? So rather than it being a, a harsh, you must conform, can it be a, a program that says, hey, we're, you know, we're conforming to what East Hampton would like us to do? Can it be something that is not necessarily a rule set in stone, but more so a program that encourages these businesses to conform? I know the ideas, we, we have, we all seem to think that the bigger anchor stores seem to be the, the largest issue in the town, that, you know, the Rite Aids, the, the, the stores like that. But again, saying, hey, you know what? I, I just feel like, again, that idea of being this rule that's set in stone, I feel like that's where I really have the problem with it.
Public saving would be better.
Here's the only, here's the only issue that, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll put that, we'll put that, we'll put that in the record, and I, and I think that's a, that's a really good idea. Unfortunately, our role as a, a subcommittee of the city council is to, um, look at legislation and its role in East Hampton. We're, we're not necessarily a publicity arm of the city that goes around to businesses and, um, asks them to comply to certain thing. That's, that's, I don't, we don't have the time to do that, I don't think that's our role necessarily. Um, you know, but, but I do think, you know, as a business owner in East Hampton, um, you know, one of the things that I think is really important and one of the reasons why I think this is a, a worthy discussion and something that I think we're gonna take a decent amount of time to look at is because if you wanna attract people to East Hampton, you need to have a place that is attractive to come to. And as I was sitting at the boardwalk with my kids today, I was like, this is gross. And if we want people to keep coming to East Hampton, we cannot have a, a, an environment that is, um, you know, not conducive to people wanting to spend time here.
I, I just spent, I just spent the day cleaning the front of Nini's, so, honestly, I know, honestly, but, but honestly, there was, there was not a single plastic bag in front of my restaurant, and, but there was, you know, lit bottles, plastic bottles, cigarettes, cigarettes. Things like that. So, I, 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 you know, sitting in front of the restaurant today for two hours, I didn't experience one single plastic bag, but I tell you, I had a bunch of other plastic things. So, so again, you know, the, the concern for the, the appearance of my restaurant in the building, and the, you know, again, I, I'm still not done, I'm gonna take a couple hours tomorrow to finish. But, but again, I get that, and I, and I want nothing more than East Hampton to be thriving and beautiful, yeah. That's kind of a huge concern myself. But, but again, I feel like the, the, the idea of the, the legislation, I think that that's really my major concern, is that the idea of saying, you know, no, you know, it just seems, you know.
Do, do we have any other, any other thoughts from the audience before we, yes?
Small oven, thriving business, no styrofoam.
True.
No, I, one of the reasons I go there is 'cause I know I don't have to come out with a pile of plastic. Their stuff is off the charts delicious. Yours is too. No, I do, I love your restaurant. We won't take our, we won't take our stuff in styrofoam. We always ask like, hey, you know, what do you put it in? Um, but they put like their salads and stuff in, um, in a metal, in a tin, like a tin. Aluminum, with the paper and stuff. Anyway, I'm just saying, there are like-
Other options, I agree.
They do really, really well.
And, and I think the idea of encouraging that behavior is a little, in my opinion, just, I think encouraging that behavior is a different animal than saying, no, you know, and it's like-
You're not a rule lover.
I hear you. My dad owned my restaurant.
I've never had to follow the rules. So, let's, uh, just call it a little order here. So, and I'll take a couple more questions, and then just, um, before-
Not a question, but again, the comment, what you're saying is, we, the people who are here, are the ones who would follow without having a rule. But the ones that need the rules are the ones who are not here, and they need something to get them to get on board with us. It'd be great if all the little stores in town that are not, you know, are using plastic bags would be able to come here and see why we're talking about it. We're not using plastic bags. So, you know, this is, it's, they need to be taught. And again, I'm still, the whole thing, education, you know, we really have to teach.
I for one use plastic bags on occasion. I do recycle them, I do reuse them, uh, for, for trash bags, we've talked about that. However, the more I hear about the issues that face the community in terms of the plastic bags and the damage to the environment, it's becoming clearer to me that this isn't really the direction I think we want our community to go over the long haul. The greener bags is, is, is important, i- it, it is important to have. The, as, as little styrofoam as possible is, is important.
Yeah, that's another, another meeting.
My point is, though, I, I would, as, as, as a city counselor, we write ordinances, we write the rules. So, I'm not, I, I, I would love nothing more, however, than to have a community that all of a sudden, those who are not participating, are not listening to what the folks in the audience here are saying, have an opportunity to change their behavior. And I can go out and see green bags in all of our, all of our stores, and we don't have to, we don't have to have an ordinance or any increased fees. That'd be the greatest, uh, for the planet. I'm not sure that's gonna happen. I would love to see that through the, through our discussion.
Yeah.
And then we would need it more.
True. So, um, just to clarify how we're gonna move forward. Um, so we're going to, uh, set another meeting as a subcommittee. We do have some other things on our agenda, I don't think we're gonna tackle them tonight, since we've been here for a while. Um, but, uh, we'll probably be meeting within the next couple of weeks. Uh, at that point, we'll start taking some of the information that we've got. We'll, I think we could still reach out to people in the community, try to get some more input. Uh, but we will start trying to draft something, um, you know, whether we decide to use it or not. I think that will be part of our discussion. But I think it does make sense for us to look at, if we do this, how do we wanna do it? Um, so you guys are welcome to come to those subsequent meetings. Um, they'll be advertised, um, here at Fifty Payson, uh, I'll prob, I think at our next city council meeting, which I believe is next Wednesday. Yeah, we will, uh, we will announce it, um, and it will probably be here. Uh, it'll definitely be on the city website too, so. Uh, but I appreciate everybody coming tonight and giving us your input. Uh, we value it, and we value your time, so thank you.
I'm just gonna put her good hug.
So, uh-
Oh, I'm fucking everybody.
Sure, so, I, I-
Would you wanna turn?
Huh?
No, stop. I don't do cameras, you guys wanna talk?
Mary over there, she voted, she's trying to get a picture.